Twenty Town Planning and Joint Meeting with the Design Review Board. Please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. Would you please stand for the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the minutes reflect the members that are present here this evening, including the design standards. Commission members should have received the draft minutes of October 28, 2019. Is there any correction or additions to those minutes?
Not seeing any outpouring, so I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes for October 28, 2019, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise. Carrie, thank you. Delegations in action items for tonight. Jim, you want to start us off on that?
Sure. For Twenty Town Crossing, since that is in the Old Town section of the city, we have the Design Review Board here with us this evening because the project is subject to those standards. As you recall, they presented building elevations several months ago, and we provided some initial feedback, which they addressed rather quickly. And in your packets last month were the revisions to the basic elevations that they had come up with, that I think certainly recognized the comments from a couple of months prior to that. And in your packet this month is a bit of a more robust pattern book that includes those same changes to the elevations, along with kind of a street view of the units side by side, and including the existing structures that are going to be in the vicinity. It doesn't look at what's across the street necessarily, but it's a little bit more of a comprehensive view. And I think they've taken the suggestions under advisement and responded well to them. So we're here for them to answer any questions, or if a developer would like to present any additional details there, however you'd like to handle things.
Would you like to represent the part of the Board of the Design Standards and start us off with some comments?
On behalf of Mr. Chair, thank you. Based on the recommendations that were offered previously to them, I think they made tremendous effort in complying with our design standards. I'm very satisfied with what they presented today, and as of right now, I have nothing further to add.
I'm open for comments. No, I just have one comment I would like to make. On page two of this, that area on Westview and Harney Road that they do not own, how many square feet is in that area, or acreage, and what can be built in that area?
If I could find that real quick. Well, what could be built within that area would be, it's R-7500, so a single-family house by right. Depending upon the square footage of the lot, and just estimating, I think it probably is large enough that it could be two lots. So if somebody were interested in doing a minor subdivision there, there probably could be two lots with a single-family home on each. Or they could do, go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception to do semi-detached as Twenty Town Crossing has done. But by right, the zone is just a single-family homes, as far as plans.
The only reason I bring that up is because the houses that are going in on Twenty Crossing are two-story. So would a rancher, would someone be able to put a rancher in there? And that would be in the rhythm of the rest of the community?
I would think it would be the more two-and-a-half stories that we put in that area, I think the more likely to fit in with the surroundings. We'd probably be looking at a two-story structure to, as far as the design standards go, in If there were some compelling reason for there to be a single-family dwelling, I think we would just look to provide some design details to kind of pick up on the character of the surrounding buildings. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, we did have a home built in the Old Town District on Westview Drive that is a single-story home, and it's a fairly large one. But that was being designed as a group home, and it was being designed to be accessible. And so there were some things that, you know, we just worked on, some details to try to bring in some Old Town-type character without having them depart dramatically from what they wanted to achieve for the group home. So I guess in a situation like that, we'd probably be a little more flexible. But for just a basic single-family home, I think that we would certainly suggest a two-story home be put on those infill lots.
I just didn't want...
...a fancy room from 5.3 acres.
5.3, okay.
5.3.
That quarter?
Yes.
How much?
0.53, just over half an acre.
Oh, I was going to say, I thought you said five acres.
I did, but I put the decimal point.
Five acres there.
I meant that they could get two lots.
My concern was that we weren't restricting the property owner, what they could put in there, by allowing this to go in, with the two stories. And evidently, we are, because they can't put a rancher in there.
Well, they took a rancher.
They can put whatever they want.
But it wouldn't be inconsistent with the two stories that's around it.
Wouldn't fit in.
Well, there's one right on this side here that is, there's one right on the other side that is, and then one across the street that is too.
But these are, I'm just trying to be consistent with what our design standards are saying.
I think the, I think that the, the more consistency you have in a specific area, the greater the pressure for the new structure to be closer to those, the surrounding area. Where you've got a hodgepodge of things, I think design standards are giving would allow a little more flexibility. But, you know, if you're in an area that's, and again, you know, we haven't had anything come to really put this to the test. And that was a concern when the standards were adopted, would be, you know, if I'm in a neighborhood of all two-story houses, and I want a rancher, you know, what's going to happen? And that really would be largely up to the Design Review Board, you know, if they felt like the applicant was bringing forth enough detail to, you know, incorporate aspects of the character of the surrounding neighborhood while still being a single-story dwelling, that might work. But it would probably be easier to do a two-story.
Was that lot holder notified? Was that owner of that?
Of this property?
Yeah.
They were here for the Board of Appeals hearing.
Right, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Will you answer my question, so I'm satisfied with what you're telling?
Mr. Chair, if I may, from the Design Standards, I think an argument could be made that a rancher could fit, based on the three houses right on Westview are ranchers, the other one a little further up, and then right on West Baltimore Street, you have what, two or three ranchers.
Three ranchers.
I think the argument could be made that it would go. What we're seeing as a trend is, single family, or excuse me, ranchers are far more expensive than two-story, because it's cheaper to build up than it is down. So I think we're kind of seeing the rancher's style, at least in this capacity, kind of dying out. But I believe from Design Standards, an argument could be made that a rancher could fit in this and still be comfortable.
All right. So, does anyone have any other comments? Anyone from the floor have any comments on this?
I'll just note, I noticed some sample materials coming up in the elevator, so if anybody does have questions, I think they're prepared to respond.
Mr. Chair, we have been entertaining some sample materials if they have.
Would a representative bring some of that up? I see some stonework here, so we're...
Can't wait.
You don't want to make a wall there.
Let me at least put this board up here. We brought the samples just to help put it in place. We're calling a neutral palette of siding colors, and they're signified in the packet by the bold boxes. So, and these are drawn from colored schemes that were in town, generated sort of a light color. We've got a yellowish color that's in it with an extra color. And then the final is sort of an off white. So these would be our neutral color. We have proposed in your packets some alternates that we would use very sparingly, and they're a sort of a steely gray and pale green. And you'll see that in your site plan, it's called the colored site plan, and the same color is what's inside on the site. And then again, in response to the board's comments, we took a look at drawing some different characteristics of the porch, so we've got a picture of the porch, and we've got three different colors, three different ones, and one sort of wrapped in this base. And then we're using a variety of shutter colors, again, to kind of draw from what we see elsewhere in the town. So we think of sort of all these things, two more living communities, and twenty, and a couple of the old.
Back five pages, you've got two single-family homes. Is there any reason for that? Excuse me, I'll...
Those are the two that are already...
They're existing.
They're, yeah, that are there.
They're existing?
Just showing how they fit in.
Got it.
And then, in terms of roof shingles, we're probably...
I missed that one.
...free, but they're all going to be in the sort of charred old.
Seven houses.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's the good stuff. Okay, any other comments?
Stand by, we're discussing.
Should I take it down there and show it? They did see it, didn't they?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, would I ask a question of the Bellford?
Certainly.
Where are the colors? What you've shown us here, is that represented both the colors of those houses?
Yeah, so what's in the color rendering is the best we can in terms of computer and printer matching the samples that are there.
But we can expect that this home here would be of the blue...
That's correct. So we scripted out the streetscape, and both with the style, in terms of the porch configuration and the color scheme, and trying to give some good variety, but, you know, making sure that there was some logic to it.
All right, Mr. Chair, we rest.
Okay. So how do we, since you're waiting for approval, is this, is this two approvals, one from the design standard, or, and then approval from this commission?
Yes. That's what you should do, one from that.
Okay, so we can't do our approval really until you make your approval, so...
You have some overlap.
Right.
Otherwise, we'll just get two votes if we do it by table, so...
All right, it can come out here.
For clarity, Mr. Chair, let's delineate who is a member of which boards for these purposes. Design Review, myself, Mr. Army Autry...
And myself.
Chairman Parker, and Councilman Julie Fuller are all members of the Design Review Board.
Okay.
So in that instance, do you want to take that portion?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion from the Design Standard Board for approval or disapproval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Twenty Town Crossing architectural pattern book.
Is there a second to that? Okay, a second was made. Now we're open for discussion. Other discussion on that? All those in favor, and then we're talking about the Design Standard Board. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise, unanimous. Okay. Now, likewise, I'll take a motion. So moved.
He's like, he's like, just, yeah, that's what she's saying.
From the Commission. Okay, motion was made.
Yeah, moved.
I'll second.
Seconding. Same, same thing. Any comments? Any comments from the floor? All those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise, unanimous. Okay. Now, likewise, I'll take a motion. So moved.
He's like, he's like, just, yeah, that's what she's saying.
From the Commission. Okay, motion was made.
Yeah, moved.
I'll second.
Seconding. Same, same thing. Any comments? Any comments from the floor? All those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise, unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Now, what happens to this? Does this get stamped, or something that this is? Is that a yes?
Okay, back to you.
Tell her, this is a joint meeting, you can't...
I know. She's like, I'm outie.
Okay, Jim, you want to move us on to the next section of Meads Crossing? Either you or Jay Phils in here.
As you know, and I previewed this last month to you...
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Meads Crossing has come forward, and we've worked with us, it's probably been over a year now, to refine the Developers' Rights and Responsibilities Agreement that we have in place. You know, we've had it, and then we've amended it several times as we've moved through the project to kind of govern the guidelines for what's going on. And some of the language that was originally in the agreement, we talked about the what-ifs, because you've got to remember, we started these things 10 years ago, and so we were doing the what-ifs, what happens, and things like that. And one of the what-ifs dealt with water, because that was a very questionable thing at the time. And the aspect of water was providing the water, would we have enough to do it for them? And also, how would we calculate the recharge? Because you have to have recharge for that as well. And the agreement that was in place, and put in place, basically said that we're going to allocate the water we have on hand to them, and then if we need more water as we go forward, we're going to talk about how we're going to get that. And we also said that we're going to allocate recharge that we have on hand, and if we need more recharge, then they're going to have to go get it. And the recharge that we talked about, the "we," is if Maryland Department of the Environment determined that we needed that. So that was way back when. We moved through the process and realized is that we, through the Main Street project, through the use of new wells, things like that, have really done better in our water usage, and we no longer are in a critical state for the current needs. And so because of that, we felt that there's no need to make the developer go out and get recharge in the end of the day. There's no need for us to do it, MDE wouldn't require it, that if anybody was going to get recharge, ever, if it was needed, it should be the city that goes and gets it. We should go get it, we should pay for it, and pass the cost on as part of an impact fee. That's not the way it's set up now, and it's not needed now. So in order to move forward, because we might not all be here when they finish their project, we want to make sure that the language in there dealing with the fact that they have to go get recharge is taken out. And that's what this amendment does. So that's what's before the council. It'll be voted on at next council meeting. What's before you is, this question is, you can ask any questions you want about it, but the question that you have to answer is, is this change consistent with the Twenty Town master plan? And you realize this hasn't really anything to do with the master plan, but that's what your jurisdiction is. So if you say, well, it doesn't have anything to do with it, so yeah, the change is fine. Or if you think there's some element we're missing, you can let us know. And Steve Smith is here, if you need any questions answered specific from him about the development.
Jim, let me come back to you. We're in compliance, or this would be in compliance with our comprehensive plan, right?
Yes.
Say that, I'd like to hear that one.
Yes, definitely. All this is changing is really on the technical end, the water appropriations, which are not a factor for now, for Meads.
Okay, so actually what we're looking for is a motion to say that it is concurrent with the comprehensive plan.
That's really it.
So if I could get that as a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, open to the floor. Comments? Comments from the county?
No, we're good.
It's still a wait.
Heard that. Any other questions?
Question. Are we still getting where the well was going to be, any parts of that, from them or no?
I don't think so.
Well, site.
The well...
There was going to be a well there. Are we getting any parts of that?
We're getting the well site.
And that becomes our site.
Becomes our site.
And our expense, right?
There won't be a well, there's a hole in the ground.
Well, that's what I'm...
Humble stuff.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
It will develop if and when it needed.
Right.
Is that my understanding? Okay.
Light of town.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed likewise, unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving on. Jim, we're moving to your report.
Okay, we've already touched on the first couple items on my report. Architecture. Oh, did want to just give you a quick update. Tannery Barn is moving along. They have tapped the water main, finally. So they're one step, one big step closer to getting their UML. Last time I was out at the site, while the measures that have been put in place to address the runoff certainly seemed to be working, they still had a few things left to accomplish. They hadn't routed the downspout leaders underground to the drainage and utility easement, as was depicted on the amended plan. So they still have some things to do. I don't know if I'd use the term punch list or not, but they've made progress, and I guess the big progress is they finally got through all the rock to tap the waterline main.
So Jim, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I know the neighbor was, you know, pretty concerned in the back. Have you heard anything from him, a pleasure or displeasure, since the measures have been put in place?
Nothing, nothing since they've put that curbing in. And that suggests to me that another, a little bit more evidence that it's doing its job, because I suspect I would hear from the neighbor if it were not.
Right, thank you.
Let's see, we talked a little bit, just talked about the Meads Crossing Dara, but a little bit more of an update there. I've had some conversations with the engineer, they've kicked off the design for Phase Two, or the work on Phase Two. We've had some back and forth with regard to the site plan for the pool and community center, or clubhouse. And this is a little bit different than, for those who have been around for several years, than we had with Carol Vista, because Carol Vista was entirely a site plan, because it was not a subdivision. So with that one, the clubhouse being a non-residential building triggers a site plan. Well, Carol Vista already was a site plan, so they were, they were already meeting the requirements for a site development plan. So here, we've got kind of a combination of things. We've got a subdivision that's gone through concept and preliminary and final for Phase One. And the clubhouse and pool area was depicted on the concept and preliminary subdivision plans, but as you can probably, for those who have been around long enough to see both subdivision and site plans, you know, we look at different things between those two. So we've got kind of an interesting situation where the developer's engineer is saying, well, we've already got preliminary plan approval, but that's for a subdivision plan and not a site plan. So it, we've got some issues, I guess, in terms of terminology, but currently, I just today responded with some direction, just to develop it as a preliminary site plan, and, you know, pointed out that where there's no subdivision of land involved, that is for the specific pool clubhouse site, that the Commission has the opportunity to waive the preliminary plan, but that more frequently what you guys do is grant two approvals in the same night, where there's really no merit to going through the whole exercise again for a final plan. So the developer's engineer is aware of that at this point, you know, that was just an update as of today. So kind of working through that, but there's been a little bit of back and forth, and I guess confusion between what has preliminary plan approval. And it's kind of, may very well be a moot point, because the preliminary plan and the final plan for a site plan are really the same thing, just with a different title. So, you know, whatever we call it, it's going to have to include the same stuff for the final site plan. So hopefully, we're on track. But it's something that I don't think we really anticipated when we were reviewing the preliminary plan for Meads Crossing. You know, none of us really thought at the time that we had this little square with the, you know, for the clubhouse and for the pool. We never really, didn't really think at that point about a site plan, because it was in a future phase. So we're there now. So get it all ironed out, but that's kind of in the works right now. So otherwise, on Meads, they're moving along at what is a pretty good pace for us. Three more units were taken down this month so far, and they've been moving lots a lot faster than we've seen for quite some time. So on other projects, Meadowbrook is, has, I believe they just last week put down the wear course, the final course on Section 4B. So they'll be looking to deed that over to the city in the spring, so it's going to overwinter, and developers, you know, antsy, eager to be relieved of that obligation, and move on to the maintenance phase for the surety. I guess that's about it. I was kind of trying to keep things short tonight, so...
While you're looking, just a quickie. The trucking company that wanted to go in out at the west end of town, they were interested in buying that property. Where are we at with that?
Haven't heard anything from them. I don't know if they have settled on the property, but they have not come back to, for any steps to put the building up that they had talked about.
Okay. Is that it for yours?
Don't really have much to update... Um, don't really have much, much to update as far as construction phase projects, although not really on our list as far as things that have been through for review, but I could give a quick update on the stormwater retrofit projects in O'Brien. So we had a community meeting at the library earlier this month for the Trevanian Terrace Stormwater Retrofit Project. The concept design is pretty well locked in on that one. It's going to convert the small pond that's existing on Lot 45 of Trevanian Terrace to a pond that takes up basically the entire three acre parcel. It will be a wet pond with mowable slopes. The standard pond, pond depth is going to be, I believe, eight to nine feet. That will stay wet, and then of course, after rain events, it'll be much, much deeper. But the slopes will be very, very walkable, even getting, you know, well into the, the wet portion of the pond, especially after rain events. So not a lot of folks turned out for that meeting at the library, and all in all, it was received pretty well. There were some questions about whether it was going to be fenced on the school side and things like that, and I'm sure we'll have to work through that with the elementary school, because it is going to be adjacent to the elementary school. And I'm sure there are going to be concerns from, from that perspective. So, you know, a long way to go on that one, but, but it's coming along. The community seems fine with, with what's being done there. And I think really, pretty much anything we would do with that parcel is going to be better than the way it was left by the developer after they declared bankruptcy. So, you know, folks seem to be on board with the project, so that's good. On the Robert Smolrun project, they've been excavating footers for the bridge abutments or the weir wall, which are one and the same, have been poured. The county is pleased with the progress so far. We had a progress meeting earlier this month, and aside from one or two complaints about early starts with construction, the project's been going very smoothly. So we're, we're pleased with that. And we could be seeing the bridge deck by spring. So, of course, we'll have to see what kind of winter we have, but, but that's, that's moving along very nicely as well, so. And with, as I said, very, very pleased that we haven't heard much in the way of complaints out there. So the county's doing a good job with managing that and staying on top of everything. So that's about it.
Okay. Dara is what we, you've adopted, that's going to happen next month, and that's all we have.
I also don't have too much for you guys, so I'll keep it short and simple. But we're finally complete our compre zoning for the industrial, commercial, and employment campus, finally. So we'll be turning our attention towards the residential compre zoning after the first of January, so just keep your eyes out for that. As well as, and of course, any information you need to find on that can be found at carolrezoning.org. And then also looking forward, we'll be starting to develop a transportation plan for the county. So we'll be meeting with municipalities here soon to try to spearhead any issues that, or, you know, things that you would like to address within that plan. But other than that, not too much.
Is that where the Antrim Boulevard extension is going to come in at?
Um, I don't think we're going to get into any specific projects necessarily. Unfortunately, I know, as you would like to hear, but more just general concerns. But like I said, we'll be meeting individually with municipalities to address or mitigate those problems as best as possible. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll go around the table. George?
I'm concerned about traffic, what's going to happen in the next 20 years. I can see some of the 500 cars that's going to come out of Beach Crossing, coming through Meadowbrook to get onto the streets to bypass the center of town and coming out on, out on the other side here. I'm thinking about when we get sewers out here, another 500 cars involved, what are we going to do with them? Once the place is built, you can't build a road. And building is going to take place all the way around Tawnytown, Carpenter's Farm, maybe Frank Feizer eventually, Roy George. We're talking 20, 25 years. But now is when we got to be thinking roads before you get to houses. That's my concern.
Well, as the city, we need to keep that on everyone's radar.
It's got to be on everybody's radar. And we got to, we have a, we have a, a, a man at the state level now that does like Tawnytown, maybe enough to put it back on the state agenda. I think that he might help us if we start working now on it. That's my concern. And I'm saying, we're, we're talking 20, 30 years down the road, but we've got to address it now.
That's, that's something that the city needs to work on. The, put the pressure on the right people.
Yes, and-
Keep us in the-
And unfortunately, he had to leave, but I know the mayor is very much in, in tune with that, that need.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I'm just going to say, here, here to what George said, I agree wholeheartedly. That's, you know, we've got to put that pressure on.
Agreed. Okay.
I've got nothing tonight.
All right. Got nothing. Okay, I, one last thing before we go into the old Sheets building. Now, the, the liquor store, beer store. I've had a couple people approach me about the lighting.
Boy, it's strong down there tonight.
That seems like all night, there's, they must have 100 watt light bulbs in those things. But that's creating some issues with the resonance. And I'm even concerned with the traffic that's coming out of, what's that street right next to, to Exxon?
Franklin.
Franklin, yeah. That the lights shining across there, vehicles trying to come out and be blinded by those lights. So is that something, Jim, maybe you could look into, or, you know, when they, that didn't come before us, like-
No, they, they didn't do anything, or they didn't propose anything that would have triggered a site plan, because all they did was paint and-
Right.
You know, retail to retail, it wasn't even a change of use. So, and intensity wise, it's, you know, of course, going to be a lesser, lesser intensity than the convenience store was. So there was nothing for us to review, but I can, I can inquire about lighting out there. I, I doubt that, knowing when Sheets was built, I seriously doubt that we had a lighting plan as part of their site development plan, and I really doubt that we had a photometric plan as part of their development plan. So I may not have anything documented to go back to try to hold them to, to say, here's what was on the site plan, and that's what needs to be maintained unless you can, unless you get the city's approval to make changes. So I'll, I'll dig into the file a little bit and have a conversation with the owners out there.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can get some improvements. I haven't noticed, driving by, that it was particularly overly lit or anything, but I'll make a point to look a little more closely before I talk to them.
Okay, thanks. I guess our next subject is our next meeting, since we typically skip December.
Why can't we have it on a regular night?
December the 30th?
Yeah, why not?
They got a down here for this.
Huh?
We don't have a date.
Well, basically, we, in the past, we've skipped December.
Well, that's okay to skip it, but why change it?
If they're going to have a meeting.
I, I think it just has been historically not scheduled that week, because it could be difficult to get a quorum the week between Christmas and New Year's. If, if nobody has plans to be out of town and is okay with, with the 30th, we certainly can, assuming we have something that would be, you know, an agenda item, we certainly can meet. It just has been typically the commission's preference to take that week off and meet the first week in January if we had an action item.
Would that have to be something motioned, or can we just decide?
We can decide, but-
Is it just kind of up in the air? If we need to have a meeting, that's when it would be? Or?
I would rather just wait to January, if we have to have one, January the 6th.
Yeah, that's all right.
Okay? If there isn't anything on the agenda, then we do it on a regular meeting on January the 27th.
And that's fine, yeah.
Makes sense.
That's, that's the way we followed in the previous years.
Okay, January 6th.
January 6th, if-
As needed.
As needed. Otherwise, January the 27th. And I think that's all I have. Anyone have anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, thank you.